Good evening, everyone. It's 6:00 PM and I call the meeting to order. Call the roll. Barker?
Here.
McCain?
Here.
Wertz?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Rust?
Here.
Hanfelder? Trent?
Here.
We'll have the pledge of allegiance. Okay, now is the time for a public comment. Do we have anyone wishing to address the board? Nobody. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve appointing Dr. Jill Griffin as trustee to fill the vacated position until completion of the April 4, 2023 election?
Motion.
Second.
Have a first and second. Any discussion? Call the roll. Barker?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Was it Rust that called? It was him, I'm sorry. Wertz?
Yes, again.
McCain?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Trent?
Yeah.
Okay, motion approved. Dr. Griffin, will you please step to the podium to take the oath of office?
And, Dr. Griffin, you have a copy of the oath to be read.
I do.
You may proceed.
I, Jill Griffin, having been duly appointed to the office of member of the Board of Trustees of Community College District Number 53, Lewis &amp; Clark Community College, Madison, McCupin, Jersey, Calhoun, Green, Morgan, and Scott Counties, State of Illinois, afore said, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the State of Illinois and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of member of the Board of Trustees according to the best of my abilities.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate this opportunity.
Are you gonna give a speech?
Okay, thank you very much. It's very exciting. Okay. Dr. Traska, do you have a budget health and enrollment update?
Yes, Julie. So I'll do the budget update and Tim Bell will do the enrollment update. So budget update, so we are still anticipating our revenues to be close to budget this year. Although tuition and fee revenue is down from the last time this year by approximately $100,000, our total revenue are up by approximately $200,000 from last year. Although our expenses are up around $450,000 from this time last year, we are continuing to stay under budget. Although we have successfully had, although we've had some success filling many positions, we are still finding it to be a challenge to find qualified candidates to fill some of our open positions. We are continuing to project being under budget in salaries and benefits for fiscal year '23. The projections are based on the first quarter of the fiscal year. Although it is early in the fiscal year, we are projecting to end with a positive fund balance in both the Education Fund and the Operation and Maintenance Fund. I'm gonna continue on to sort of provide a little bit more clarity on the correlation between our expenses being up and, of course, the lack of being able to find qualified candidates in some of our positions. So we are seeing, we see that some of the increase in costs still relate back to we have more people on campus this time during this year than we did last year and are having increases in events and other increases such as supplies, et cetera, that have gone up because more team members are on campus. We are working, when most people were working at home, we were sort of using our own resources, so that's obviously gone up. Plus, as maintenance continues to get fully staffed, they're being able to catch up on repairs and maintaining the things on campus that really were not being addressed during the pandemic. So maintenance expenses have gone up from this time last year. As far as salaries, we have a spreadsheet that we use in finance that uses, that we use to budget for all positions, even the open positions. It has been really hard not to budget for them. So in other words, you know, even though we may not anticipate being able to fill a position, we still budget for that position as if it were a filled position. For instance, in one department, there were two positions that were open, but those candidates did not accept those positions. So those positions are still open and it appears that, you know, that budget is still there. So it's really difficult for us to foresee what team members will do in terms of leaving positions or if, in fact, will be able to fill positions. And if we do try to fill positions, as we've seen in some very recent searches, that can stretch anywhere from one to two months to beyond, just depending on the pool of team members that, or candidates that we receive in those pools. You know, another example is we have two dean positions that were vacant. We were able to fill one, that's on the agenda tonight. We're hoping to find success in filling the second position in the spring, and that position will actually ultimately start next fiscal year. So for this fiscal year, although we budgeted for two full dean positions, as an example, we'll only be using the budget for half of one of those positions. So of course, that affects, you know, that end-of-year fund balance, so we ultimately end up a little bit more successful in part because of those positions not being able to be filled. And then one other thing is, as the year goes on, it may level out a little bit more because of how we are doing projections. And that happens, we compare a percentage of last year and then we expense this year annualized to find our projected expenses. So, you know, this was a question that came up and it's, it's a really difficult process because we hope we can fill the positions, and that's really the primary issue because 70% of our budget is personnel. And so if we aren't filling 20 or 30 vacant positions, but we've budgeted for those positions, you know, our budget is always going to look a lot healthier at any given point in time. So the other part of this, too, is, it's kind of the theme on campus is we are trying to be more and more responsible with our dollars. We know that, you know, things are getting more expensive. Inflation is happening around us, so we just want to be good stewards of the money that we have. Plus, as we think about this from a planning perspective, you know, we have some things that we want to bring to the board in the next semester that's really about investing in the future of the campus, particularly around our competency-based education vision. That's gonna happen around an academic transformation model that we actually flushed through a little bit today as an executive team. And other priorities that we're seeing are very important moving forward. So we feel good overall about our budget, you know. We're anticipating things to continue to improve on campus from a enrollment perspective, but also from a budget management perspective. So hoping to be able to fill positions and get really sharp folks on our team that can help us move forward. So, sorry, that's a little longer than usual, but I wanted to talk a little bit through sort of how we're looking at projections and really the issue being not being able to fill positions that we anticipated to be able to fill. So, any questions or thoughts from anyone on that? All right, thank you. Tim?
Good evening. So, spring enrollment is well underway and as you've seen the latest numbers, compared to last year, we are up 2.9% in headcount and 7.4% in credit hours, due in large part to a nice increase in full-time headcount of 14% and 16% in full-time credit hours, which is exciting. Some other things I wanted to highlight is we had 170 Jerseyville High School seniors on our campus Friday, November 4. Gave them tours of some of our programs. We had a student panel, which was great, and lunch was provided. Great success that we hope to continue with other high schools in the future. Some upcoming events, we have an N.O. Nelson Campus Open House Thursday night, 17th, from 5:00 to 7:00, which you're invited to, of course. We'll have free food. WLCA, the campus radio station, will be there to provide music. A great opportunity for prospective students in that area to meet our Nelson faculty, check out the programs offered, our process operations, industrial electricity, the fab lab, as well as the many general education courses we offer at the Nelson Campus. December 1st, from 4:00 to 6:00, we're also having a senior open house here on the Godfrey Campus for high school seniors and their parents. A great opportunity to reach those increased numbers of early grads we see in high schools and some of those seniors that just have, maybe have a few classes to graduate, hoping to reach them so they can see what we're all about, meet with program coordinators, faculty tour the campus, and check out the numerous clubs we offer here. The three-year enrollment management plan, just about complete, that we need for HLC. I'm gonna send a link to the leadership team, as well as you all, probably tomorrow morning, to give any feedback on the latest draft we've come up with. Then we will discuss that feedback as an executive team, present to Canvas team members after that, and then present a final draft for you to vote on at the January meeting. And finally, I'd like to highlight the visits to many of our school districts that myself, Dr. Traska, and Dr. Swinski did, as I refer to as our high school world tour. We, we, there's still a few to reschedule, but we went basically from one side of our district to the other, meeting with superintendents and high school principals to just see what we can do to better assist them. Ideas to increase dual credit and concurrent enrollment. Other community partnerships, particularly with our rural districts, were discussed. These meetings were very exciting and productive, as well as Dr. Traska's driving his Tesla across, recharged beforehand, well done, sir. And we'll make sure we are still engaged with all of them as we move forward. So, any questions for me?
Is there a charging station at Jerseyville High School?
I mean, we crossed the ferry. When was that? That was, phew, yeah.
And that drove me nuts. I hate water, so we had to go over.
Thanks.
Growing experience for you, right? All right. The omnibus agenda is presented for a vote. Is there any item the board would like to be held out and voted on separately?
I'd like to carve out item J as in jack-o'-lantern.
Okay. So we'll pull out J and then I'll take a motion to approve the omnibus agenda. Okay, any discussion? Okay, call the roll. Barker?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Okay, motion approved. Do I have a motion to approve item J?
Second.
Okay, I have a first and second. Any discussion?
I just have a few questions. See, how many laptops are we talking about here?
This is Ron Wald.
I just posed that question to one of our team members. I wasn't sure what question you had, so.
Yeah, it's 175 laptops. Can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
It's 175 laptops.
175 laptops, Kevin.
And what does that, what does that work out to per laptop?
It'll be about $1,310 each. So $1,310.
1,000, 1,375?
1,310.
Okay. So, are these extremely powerful laptops?
Oh, they're decently high-end. I mean, laptops are obviously quite a bit more expensive than desktops. I'm gonna have to pull up the specifications of them, but, yeah, they're, I mean, they're not, I wouldn't say they're highly super high-end, but they're not low-end either, probably more mid-grade.
I mean, that seems awfully high for a laptop. I mean, an Apple MacBook Pro, top of the line, is not much more than that. Well, anyway, that really goes back to the main question I have is, it just seems very shocking to me that we only got one quote. I mean, does, I've never heard that there's any shortage of laptops.
Yeah, I'm not sure why we didn't get many responses on that. We, we sent the bid packet to multiple companies and we only got the one back. Now, I do know, I mean, the, when they quote for Dell, they actually go to Dell for the prices. I mean, the company itself doesn't fully decide the price on that. I mean, they have to go Dell directly to get the pricing.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite understand that you're saying CDW has to go directly to Dell?
Yes. Yep, they work directly with Dell for the pricing.
Yeah.
But we found that even when multiple companies go, price for the, for the computers, they'll come back very similar price because they all have to go to Dell for the, to get the quote.
Is there any software on those then, when they arrive? Are they all ready to just open up and turn on, or do you have to do a lot of work to get them going?
They do come with Windows 10 pre-installed, but we, we put a custom image on them that has, you know, Microsoft Office and the other software that we use at the college. But we do have to purchase them with Windows license on it because that's part of the, that's part of the requirements for the Microsoft licensing.
Okay, that's all the questions I have.
Thank you. Thanks, Ron.
Any other discussion? All right. Call the roll. Barker?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Motion pass. All right, we'll move on to action items. Do I have a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement, amendment for use of an additional office with Illinois Network for Child Care Resource and Referral Agencies subset birth to five Illinois?
So move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Call for the vote. Barker?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hanfelder? Trent?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. Do I have a motion to approve the revision of Team Staff Policy 507, Electronic and Telephone Communication Systems?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Okay, call for the vote. Barker?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. Do I have a motion to approve the amendment of the 2022-2023 holiday calendar?
Motion?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes, I do have a few questions. Maybe for the, for starters, could, could you walk us through that, that week that we're talking about, I guess it's called like spring break? You know, for example, are there any students here, are there any faculty here, et cetera?
No, that, that whole week, we're closed, so students are gone, faculty are gone. And so this is my proposal to offer the first day of spring break for everyone to be off, to give everyone a break, both our salaried and non-salaried team members. And then, of course, if folks wanted to take additional time off, that would be on their own. Yeah, so that, the campus is essentially closed, so we'd be totally closed for one full day during spring break and then we'd open back up on that Tuesday.
So, so the other, how did you happen to pick Monday? You could pick Monday or Friday, I guess, right? Wouldn't, would that have mattered?
Well, yeah, we just picked Monday, so it's off the weekend. So, you know, usually on that Friday before spring break, we'll have a little bit of an all-team event and then folks leave and then they get a long weekend and come back on Tuesday. If you're faculty, you'll come back the following Monday. And students are also not on campus, so.
So like in the, in the collective bargaining agreement with the faculty, that was, that's just like a?
Yeah, spring break is.
That's in the, that's in the faculty, really?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. So, like, what, what is the cost of this new extra holiday? How many people would be affected by this?
I think you're, you're talking around, I'd say around 140 to 150 team members that are either salaried or hourly employees, so exempt and non-exempt. And, and the other thing, too, is, you know, with our hourly employees, you know, oftentimes they don't, they don't have balance to be able to take a day off. So this is really giving everyone at the midpoint in the semester, which is spring break, just a breather, just a little bit of a long weekend, sort of a morale booster, you know, support the team a little bit, that's it. And no one else is on campus, so, you know, it's kind of just.
So they really don't have, have very much to do, huh?
Well, I mean, there's always stuff to do, but, you know, it's just giving people that extra day, so that's it.
So what, what would you say that, that the cost of this is?
It's a positive emotional cost, that's how I put it. I mean, you know, if I, if I'm gonna add everybody's salaries up, I, you know, I mean, I'm not looking at it from a monetary perspective versus a morale and supporting the team because not everyone gets to take any time off during that week because there is things to do. But I, you know, I would say, you know, I don't know, I mean, I can get you that number if you want the number of the, of the team being off for one day, so.
I don't know how you'd calculate that really because probably work that they have to do, they're gonna have to do the next day.
Right, right, right.
It's not like the work will go away.
And, and, and most of our team, I mean, if, if you're, if you're, if you're a salaried team member, I mean, we, we work 37 and a half hours per week, which by, I know you had that question for me before, Kevin, and that's, that's pretty common across the state and community colleges. We had some community colleges respond to ask the question, and there were, I think, two that had 40-hour weeks, the high schools in the area. You know, most of them are 37 and a half hours for their non-certified team members and for their certified team members, being faculty, being their teachers and non-teachers. You know, so most of your hourly folks will, will work a lot more than 37 and a half hours per week. I mean, I, I see it on a daily basis. So this is just a chance for, hey, take a breather, it's midway in the semester, appreciate all you've done. And, and I also look at this from a, from a, from an investment perspective, that we're, that we're trying to take care of the team a little bit. And, and I think, you know, it, it adds to just being a little bit different than everyone else. I mean, and, and there are, there, I mean, it's not uncommon, I mean, I know across the country, I mean, some schools are closed for spring break completely, some do give a Monday and a Friday off, but of course, it's, it's gonna be based on the culture of that campus and based on what, what that, that leadership team and board determines to do. But I find value in it and, you know, always appreciate the consideration.
How would the, the people that work remotely be affected?
This, this affects everyone in the same way, so if you're a remote team member, and, and we do have at least one, I know, remote person that works remote, out of state, it, it's the same thing, so they would have that day off, just as if you were a, a person physically on campus.
So, you've mentioned like, to provide more work-life balance, I guess, and reward.
Sure.
But is that, was there something else that prompted this? I mean, did somebody come into your office and say?
No, it's one of my ideas, sorry. Just on me. You can blame it on me 100%.
So the whole idea is to give them a, a day for better work-life balance and, and that?
It's during, it's during spring, during spring break, it's a convenient time.
So if the, if the faculty is off the whole week, why not give, give the rest of the people the whole week off?
Go ahead, you can make that an amendment. Go pay. All right, Kevin, you're onto something here. Go for it.
Okay. What, well, maybe we need to explore that some more before we vote on this motion.
Would rather move ahead on this motion.
Oh, you mentioned that the 37 and a half hour week. The other thing that we talked about was, we're gonna try to find out how the holiday week looks at, at other community colleges. What does their holiday, their holiday schedule look like?
Talking, are you talking spring break or holiday?
No, just overall, I mean, we have.
Oh, yeah, most, I'd say most community colleges in the state, I don't know if Gabe's on, but I know he's looked at this, are closed from pretty much end of business on the 16th of December through January 3rd. And because New Year falls on a weekend, that Monday is also off, so we come back on that Tuesday. And then faculty are actually back the following week, which would be the 10th. And that's in-service week as well, so, you know, activities and guest speakers and getting ready for the semester, so. So that's pretty typical. So our, our, our calendar reflects pretty similarly to most community colleges across the state. I, I mean, you know, some may give an additional, you know, Monday off here and there based on, based on their calendar, but most everyone recognizes, you know, federal holidays. You know, your Thanksgiving week is, is typical, you know, usually, I mean, some schools are closed for that full week. We, we close end of business on Wednesday and everyone's back on that Monday, so we get Thursday off and Friday off. So I mean, you're, you're really, it's, you're sort of comparing apples to apples, but there's some oranges in there as well, it just all depends.
Yeah, I see, the total is about, well, there's, there's 10, 10 and a half holidays, 11 days for the winter, winter break, two, equivalent of two days off for the summer schedule, two personal days, and one floating holiday. That's 26 and a half holidays per year. And then the average vacation is at least 15 weeks, 15 days, rather. So that's about almost 42 days a year that they're off, right?
Yeah, so on vacation, you know, the, the team members have the option to take those off if they, if they'd like, but the common holidays and time off, yeah, I think we're at about 22, I think you're correct, 22 days, 21 or 22, if I remember.
I don't, I can't imagine anybody wouldn't take all of those days, the floating days and their personal days.
Sure. So they can use those floating days for the Tuesday, Wednesday of spring break and get three days off.
It seems like more than enough time off.
Any other discussion? Okay, call for the vote. Barker?
Yes.
Excuse me. Wertz?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. Do I have a motion to approve the 2023, excuse me, 2024 holiday calendar?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Does, does this include that extra day then, Dr. Traska?
Yes, it does, sorry.
Okay, call for the vote. Barker?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Motion carried. Do I have a motion to approve the 2023-2024 academic calendar?
Motion? Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Just a quick question, I think it's, is, is it, this calendar varying in any significant amount from prior years?
No, it's pretty typical, yeah.
Okay, call for the vote.
Barker?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Russ?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. Do I have a motion to approve the agreement with Houston Area Safety Council? Okay, any discussion?
I just want to say thank you all for your patience with this, and I want to thank Matt Gardner for his awesome help in getting this shaped. It took us quite a while, but we look forward to moving forward with providing this training. But as you can see in the agreement, it's through a licensing agreement, you know, and on a training, a contract-by-contract basis. So just thank you for your patience, and I know I've shared a lot of information on this with you over even the last couple of months, so just thank you.
Yeah, I I'm glad we got this resolved. Can you just give a brief summary of what this is exactly? So the public knows?
Yeah, absolutely. So, so we've had a partnership in general with Houston Area Safety Council for many, many years. And in, in this recent year, the accreditation sort of oversight of Houston Area Safety Council changed a rule that said you no longer have to have a person hired by Houston Area Safety Council to be employed by Houston Area Safety Council, but actually who does training for us as a provider of that training. So since that changed, which actually is a better thing for us, you know, we're, we're able to provide that training through a licensing agreement, and then we'll hire that trainer. And in this case, it's likely going to be the same person who worked for HASC but happens to work locally here or live locally here. He will deliver that training for us on a contract-by-contract basis, so we'll be able to negotiate those prices with those customers and then, of course, pay him on a contract-by-contract basis. You know, part of this agreement, too, is that, you know, we are also paying the invoice for that employee of HASC and we're basically closing that out, so there's, there's no longer going to be anything owed to HASC. The only, only thing that will be owed is any licensing, and then, of course, you know, we pay our trainer and then we'd be able to keep the profit. You know, the goal on this, too, is, is, is to try to be at a margin of about 50%, you know, I mean, that's just typical, so we can also cover other sort of indirect costs that go into operating our workforce training center. So, I mean, it's good that we still have the relationship with HASC, but it's just going to look a lot different. It's going to be more through a licensing agreement and not having an employee through them that we have to reimburse. That just got a little bit tricky over the years, so.
Can you tell me what kind of training would be?
Yeah, so, so, so this is proprietary training through the Houston Area Safety Council, so, you know, I mean, one of our larger clients is P-66, so it's, it's essentially safety training. It could be anything from, you know, dealing with hazard materials to, you know, name it. So, so Houston Area Safety Council has this curriculum that they've developed, so, you know, and these companies want to use that curriculum, so, you know, we would provide that training for them, so.
And the thing that's unique about this is that we're usually hired by local corporations or companies to do this.
Yes, yeah, so we're a reg, we're sort of a regional provider of this training, and they're sort of spread out throughout the country. So it's a good thing to be able to offer it, and and we, we think we'll be able to also grow that business a little bit as well, so.
Which a lot of people in the area might not know that we do that, so it's a good thing to highlight.
I think also the fact that that's a transferable.
Yes.
Certificate, so if you work at P-66 and then you need to go to Monsanto.
Yes.
They recognize that training, you don't have to start over, start retrain them.
Yeah, exactly.
Saves everybody a lot of time and money.
And we actually, we're actually pretty lucky, we have a good, a good trainer, you know, who's, who's willing to continue and help us, and so we're pretty excited about that. So he's been certified to do the training.
Another benefit provided to the community, right?
Exactly, so.
Yeah, okay, anything else? Anybody else have any other discussions? Okay, call for the vote.
Barker?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Russ?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. We'll move on to informational items. Dr. Trask, is there anything you would like to highlight in the informational items?
Uh, no, not in particular. I know the one that we, we really like to focus on is, of course, the recognition report, so that's F, and just want to highlight those team members that have been recognized by, by their, by their peers, and of course, Lori will, will highlight that, but that's all I've, and then, of course, Sharice Jackson's going to deliver H, so.
And I think Debbie's going to talk about hiking through the holidays after me, so. I just, I was asked to share a little bit more detail in this one's recognition report. We want to make sure that our team members are, are highlighted for the, the great works that they're doing on campus. So I know that you've read it, but just for those who are listening in at home, our college for life instructors were given recognition for, as they're described as being dedicated, encouraging, compassionate, reliable, and a fun group. And, and as the nominator said, they really represent that family, that work-family culture that we're building here on campus. We also want to recognize Katie Piper, who's our landscaper with Horticulture and Grounds, and those of you who attended garden shows or just walked through the campus can see some of her work each day. But one of the things that she does, that she was highlighted for, is she works with our College for Life program, and they, she's helped them develop a growing knowledge garden, and apparently that is one of the most popular classes in our College for Life program under her direction. Also, this summer, she also hosted a lunch with our College for Life students with some of the harvest from, from that garden, so we want to recognize Katie. Erica Dorr, who is one of our new environmental educators, was on the job for just a few weeks and was the host of our most recent neighbor nights that was described as being the best one in 2022 so far. But Erica, before she came to Engrec, worked with the Trio Program in East St. Louis, and her students were featured in the neighbor nights, in the video that was featured at neighbor nights. And so she was described as, you know, creating this engaging and interactive event for everyone who attended that, so we want to give Erica credit. And then Julie Joe Bryce, also with Engrec, was here for less than six weeks, and as soon as she entered as a Lewis and Clark employee, we were in the midst of planning the 20th anniversary celebration for Engrec, and she was very instrumental in that, so we wanted to make sure she was highlighted. Catherine Ross, another new employee in our Human Resources Department, was tasked with running our United Way campaign this year, and never had she done that before, but she really embraced that and not only increased participation and engagement and raised awareness, but she also helped us surpass our goal this year by, by about $1,200. So we're, we're really proud of that. And then I have to give kudos to Amy Stevens, who's the Secretary in High School Partnership. As Sharice Jackson can tell you, she was very short-staffed one day in the enrollment center due to some illnesses on the front line. She called up to Yvette McLemore in High School Partnership and asked if Amy was around. Amy was off that day, but when Amy found out they were shorthanded, she came in to work. And I just think that's a really unique situation and want to make sure we give Amy credit for coming in when we were short-staffed, so that is it.
Thank you, Lori. Debbie, you want to come up in?
Hello, everyone, sorry, hello, everyone. I want to just share a little bit about a campus event that we are, several of us on campus are planning. It's called Hiking Through the Holidays, and this is a campus and community event that was developed from the work of Key Direction III, which is building a transparent and inclusive campus culture as part of our strategic plan. And then Key Direction IV, broadening community and educational partnerships, has expanded on this event, as I will share with you here in just a second. Hiking Through the Holidays is actually a quarter-mile trail through the hiking path located on the backside of Lewis and Clark's campus near their tennis complex. The trails are going to be lit up with festive lights and decorations to celebrate the different holidays of the season. We will have a Holiday House, Hanukkah Heights, Quanza Corner, Christmas Tree Lane, Monticello, Monticello Meadows. We'll also have picture opportunities, hot chocolate, and treats available for visitors. Individuals from departments across campus have been working tirelessly on this event. We've had several 8:00 AM morning meetings and then lots of outside work happening to make this something that Lewis and Clark can be proud of. As mentioned, this is an outdoor event, and it will actually be open on Friday and Saturday evenings, beginning the Friday after Thanksgiving, and will continue through the Friday before Christmas. And those evenings will be open from 5:00 to 9:00 PM, weather permitting. We'll have Lewis and Clark team members and students volunteering at the event, and visitors may also see Blazer hanging out on the hiking trail. In addition to everyone coming together and sharing ideas to bring this plan into something amazing, another exciting part of it is called Christmas Tree Lane. And as part of Christmas Tree Lane, all departments on campus, programs, clubs, organizations, and athletic teams here were offered the opportunity to receive a six-foot-tall, two-dimensional wood template Christmas tree to decorate, to represent their program, their team, their department, and those will all be displayed as part of Christmas Tree Lane, which will line up part of the hiking trail. And at this time, we have 44 trees that are being decorated, so we're super excited to represent all different parts of campus. So part of KD4, their plan is, on Tuesday, November 29th, we're having what is called Flip the Switch, and that is an opportunity for Lewis and Clark team members, students, Board of Trustees, to come and have the opportunity to walk through the hiking trail for the first time and see the lights. So we're going to be turning on the lights, we're going to have snacks and drinks available. Key Direction IV has also set up an event with the Riverbend Growth Association, so there will be a special night on Thursday, December 8th, to welcome area businesses and community partners to come enjoy hiking through the holidays. So we're super excited about this opportunity to show off the great campus and introduce the community and the bigger community and the Lewis and Clark community to parts of campus that maybe many don't even know exist through our hiking trails. So we hope you'll all add this to your list of holiday festivities this season and for many years to come. We appreciate the support of the college in making this happen and the more than 20 team members who have been part of the planning and the carry-through of this. We hope that those who will visit will appreciate the beauty of our hiking trails, will feel welcome on our campus, and share in the joy of the holiday season with family and friends. So thank you for the opportunity to just let you know this is coming and be on the lookout for more information in the next week. Any questions?
When was the Flip the Switch?
It's going to be on the Tuesday following Thanksgiving, November 29th. It's actually from 3:30 to 5:00 PM, so sunset's around 4:30, a little bit after, and we're going to flip it all on, and you're going to be amazed, so, super excited.
I have a question.
Yes.
Who, I, I must have missed it, who came up with this idea?
Okay, Cody Zipman is, he has the idea, and then lots of other people have helped to build it into something even more spectacular, so. Christmas Tree Lane is an addition that I got added on. There are lots of people who have had their hands in it, but I, I just, I don't know, we're all excited about it, and I hope that you all get to come out, enjoy it, and be proud of it, too.
This was an idea that snowballed.
Yes. Love it. Thank you.
I, I want that in the minutes.
That's good.
Okay.
Thanks, Debbie. Dr. Jackson.
I will keep this brief. This is how I turn it on? There we go. So this are the results that I am presenting is from our student satisfaction survey. This was actually sent out to the students spring of 2022, so March of last year is when the initial information went out. The survey opened for students April 7th, 2022, and then it stayed open for one month for students to be able to provide their feedback. So just a little information, satisfaction is defined when expectations are met or exceeded by the student's perception of the campus reality. So Noel Levis is actually a national group that provides surveys, so we did get the survey. This was actually done and sent out from the Vice President of Student Affairs Office, so it was the prior Student Affairs VP. So we are measuring the student satisfaction. Evidence has shown that when students are satisfied, it helps with student retention, completion rates, and of course, alumni giving. Four ways that we can use the data, retention, accreditation, recruitment, and strategic planning. The strength of the items that the students rated in the top half of their importance and also the top half of satisfaction relative to the other items. Challenges were the top half of their importance, but the bottom satisfaction. I would like to just point out, of course, we know when surveys go out, sometimes only the students that are not satisfied are the students that actually do the survey. Sometimes our happy students don't even take the time. Sometimes timing does matter when surveys are sent out or completed. Also, how we reach out, the method of communication, so. The survey was sent out to 2,051 students, they were invited to complete the survey. There was an email that went out directly from the company. There was also a personal email that was sent out from the VPSA, just really inviting them a personal touch. Once the survey came back, we had 218 students that actually did complete the survey. This was a mix of full-time and part-time students, so we had about 11% response rate. So we know, of course, we would have rather had a higher rate, but I think some participation is better than none at all, of course, and then it still gave us something to work with. The information has been presented to the executive and the leadership team. We had some discussion surrounding the results, and the plan is just to continue to talk about the results, how we will now take the information that we have and then make improvements on our opportunities. So the strength, the top areas that students, that they cared about and they felt like we were meeting their expectations, the campus is safe and secure for all students, students are made to feel welcome, there are sufficient courses within the program of study available each term, and this was just a general survey, so there is not specific programs that are highlighted. The campus provides online access to services I need, and faculty are usually available to students outside of the class, so this is what students felt like we were doing well in. Some of our opportunities that students highlighted, this institution helps me identify resources to finance my education, faculty are fair and unbiased in their treatment of individual students, administrators are available to hear student concerns, which is another point, it was not broken down what's considered administrator, whether that was, you know, faculty, whether that was an executive lever, team member, or just a leadership person on campus. And then the quality of instruction I receive in most of my classes is excellent. These are the areas that the students felt were important to them, however, they felt we can improve on. Again, of course, we have the information, we took it, but we did not have more information on, like I said, timing. It was not an open-ended question, so students were not able to provide any specific feedback. It was just a matter of them checking satisfied or unsatisfied. So this is the information and what we have, the first step was to survey students, of course, review and share the results, that's what we're doing now, explore the data, of course, we need to do that on a deeper level, respond to the data with new initiatives, and then inform the entire campus as a whole of next steps for the information from the survey. And then that is it. Any questions?
Yeah, so on the strengths and challenges, they're given a list and they ranked them, or how did, how was that done?
It is, so, and I can send out the raw data. It, it was actually sent, the students had the information and they were able to rate whether they were highly satisfied or dissatisfied, and then it rated with a number.
Okay, so they, they came up with the list, I mean, the, the survey people came up with the list?
Yes, yes. So these were not questions that we selected as an institution.
Are you planning on doing this again? Maybe you said it and I didn't catch it.
Yes, so we are still talking about it in the leadership team. We were actually looking at tools that we can use where we have our own questions, things that are very important to us, if we want to add those questions, make it more personalized, so that is an ongoing discussion.
I know sometimes when I've taken surveys, they say, you know, would you like to be contacted? Did this one do that?
It was anonymous survey, so it did not have any contact information on there that I think is one of our. that I think is one of our opportunities to have a survey where students are able to provide written feedback and then provide their contact information if they want to be contacted.
Yeah, because, you know, the challenges are a little concerning, but the survey reply rate, you know, is very low. And what's typical? What does this company normally get?
It really varies, so I asked that question as well. They do a lot of four-year surveys as well. So I did reach out to some of our partners and then asked them about two years. So the information that they really compared us to, it's four-year and two-year combined. So it wasn't really just specific for two years. I've seen anywhere, and when I asked the representative, she said she's seen anywhere from thirty percent upwards to seventy percent. It just depends on what they offer as an award or incentive to take the survey.
And I would just piggyback on that. Have you guys considered ways to increase participation, different? Have you like brainstormed different ways to get a higher percentage of participation? Because I agree with Julie, that is a really low rate of participation. It's really hard to draw a lot from the survey, knowing such, there's just such small participation. Have you guys thought about that or brainstormed ways?
Absolutely, so this survey was actually, I think, one of the opportunities as well. Like I said, it came out from the prior VP's office. So actually talking with the leadership team, even a lot of people on campus didn't know that the survey was going out. So we didn't have a lot of time to promote or make sure, you know, to brainstorm on that. So that's definitely something we talked about in the leadership team. Coming together as a team, making sure that everyone knows when it's going out. We decide as a team, when is a good time to go out, what we're looking for when we send out the survey and what results we're looking for, what we're trying to accomplish, and then, of course, ways to increase participation.
I think one way, too, is to sort of go through the clubs. I mean, like, it's pretty, we have a gaming club with a hundred and seventy students. I mean, just as an example, if we were to say, hey, at the next club meeting, could we take ten minutes of your time and there's a QR code, you scan it and do the feedback? That's potentially a hundred and seventy, then another club has forty, and then go through SGA. So I think, yeah, because I mean, I would like to see at least a fifty percent response rate, if not higher. So I would agree, the sample is important. And then also the timing, so we talked about this. There wasn't a really clear strategy in the spring of why we sent it out when we did. I mean, there was a lot going on in the spring. We were still getting over cyber attack. There was a lot of discombobulation. So, you know, I think we do it again. We have to think really hard when, and then we want to do it about that same time every year so we have some baselines that we can compare. So, but we are, we do want to continue it and hopefully help us kind of continue to move forward.
Absolutely.
I was even thinking along the same lines as you with, you were talking about creating time in clubs, but maybe even creating class time at the very beginning. And I know you don't ever want to take instructional time away from teachers. However, it's important and it's, you know, it's the voice of the students. And so I think if you even, you know, built in ten minutes at the beginning of class time, maybe you would get a higher participation rate. Because you know how, we all do it, you know, we all get surveys. And if you're at a place where you can actually take it, great, but if not, you just don't. And so, but I, I don't know, I agree, I just think it's a really low rate of participation.
Was this anonymous? Was that anonymous?
Yeah.
It was, yes.
The only thing I was thinking, if it wasn't, you could have, say, well, we're going to give away ten coffee cards to Germania Brew House out of a drawing and have everybody enters a survey, gets a chance to have their name drawn. But you'd have to, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't have their name.
It wouldn't have their names. So I've done it before where in another institution, I actually had seventy percent, seventy-eight percent participation rate with the raffle. So they would just have to print out the confirmation sheet right there, student email address on there, and put it in a box. So it was still confidential, but they were able to have some incentive to complete the survey. So, thank you.
So kind of related to surveying, what do students do for each class? Like, do they take some kind of, do they do some kind of evaluation of each class?
End-of-course evaluation.
End-of-course, okay.
Maybe to the point is it's linked somehow to that, that at the end of the semester, there's a satisfaction.
I think the possibilities are endless.
We promise next year there will be a much better response rate.
Yes.
You got to start somewhere, I guess.
Yes.
Was it stratified by department, like, you know, nursing and automotive?
No, it was not. It was just sent out to the student population, two thousand fifty-one students at that time. And it did not specify for program. It was just full-time, part-time, and that was the only identifier.
Based on the questions that were asked, which you're familiar with them or not, would you say it would make that much difference whether they were in nursing or welding or criminal justice?
I think if we split it up and did it by programs, I think we could have gotten some really good information. We, of course, know our OTA program is amazing, welding, we get really good feedback. So I think, you know, nursing, dental, I think if we did split it up by program. But this, again, was not a survey we could really personalize, it was already created by the company.
Let's say that this was done by the previous VP, right?
Yes, it was sent out April of 2022. So that was from the prior Vice President, came from that office, yes.
Did institutional research, Dennis Grebe, help at all with this, with this survey?
Not to my knowledge, however, I was not a part of sending the survey out or any of that preparation, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson.
Okay, leadership?
Yep, so Mary is going to come up and provide a brief update on finance and then I'll provide my report.
Now that I'm closer to the microphone, I can see that we do have one empty seat. But it is really nice to see a happy and healthy group tonight. I think it's been a while since, since we've had a full team. I know that I stand between you and some of the last parts of the meeting, but I do have about six topics I just want to briefly touch on related to the finance area. About a year ago, the board approved a contract for Lewis and Clark to work with Huron Consulting Group on our indirect cost proposal. It was due for review and renewal with our cognizant agency, which is the Health and Human Services Department. Our proposal was submitted to HHS in March, as required, and since then, we've waited and we continue to wait. Kathy Snyder of Huron has periodically contacted the agency with the latest contact being last week. Their response was, they are backlog due to staff shortages and cannot provide an estimated date on when our proposal will be reviewed. And until we have a new proposal, we are authorized to continue to use our existing rate, which is at thirty-seven percent. Just to give you an idea, though, our submitted proposal indicates a calculation of fifty-six point six total, both the facilities and the administrative cost portions. Based on past experience, we can expect that this will not be the percentage that HHS will award, but I think it's likely that it will come back with something higher than our current thirty-seven percent. And as I know more, I will share through either our monthly updates or another evening that I get to speak with you. In September, the college was notified of the district's eligibility for the special tax levy for levy year 2022 in the amount of three point three-three cents. The state average combined educational and operations and maintenance purposes tax rate is twenty-eight point three-three cents. And as Lewis and Clark's rate for these funds is twenty-five cents, the district is authorized to levy the difference pending Board of Trustee approval. Following discussion and evaluation of Lewis and Clark's financial health, we've determined that the college will not bring this forward as part of the recommendation of the 2022 levy. Like Dr. Truska touched on earlier, we're confident about our fund balances coming out of these unique years in addition to our strong management of college resources. We, as a campus team, continue to practice diligent and responsible investment in work that is focused on Lewis and Clark's student experience and in our vision to strengthen access to programs and courses through innovative models like competency-based education and team member support. Again, in making this determination, we acknowledge and are excited that the college retains necessary resources to advance our vision and support future growth. And the annual tax levy for the 2022 year will be brought forward at next month's meeting and it must be filed with the, each county's county clerk by the last Tuesday of the month. Last month, I started to see movement on our insurance claim for the cyber event that took place last November. We believe we have paid the last of the invoices as of the most recent month-end. As of mid-October, I reconciled our expenses at that time with the insurance company and they currently have what they need to issue a partial payment of approximately seventy percent of what is due. That's about two hundred and fifty-five thousand. There are a handful of invoices that are still under their review as well and the straggler invoices that are still, that have come in, but we should soon see a reimbursement of a large amount of the costs associated with this experience. And as you know, the Federal Reserve marked a sixth consecutive rate hike and four straight three-quarter point increase during its November meeting. The investment section of the Treasury's report reflects investments made in October at increasing higher rates, and we have been able to continue with some investment activity at increasingly desirable rates in November. The college has been able to take advantage of the recent increase in market rates by investing in Treasuries and other investments at yields over four percent, including commercial paper investments with yields over five percent. Our investment managers continue to look for opportunities to purchase investments at these yield levels in the core account portfolio, as well as they maintain the portfolio's target duration and look for opportunistic yield-enhancing trades. The audit for fiscal year 22 is underway. Whitfield had individuals on-site for a total of seven days, divided over two trips, one in mid-late October and the other in early November. Feedback has been positive. It was communicated that this went extremely well for a new client relationship. And when I expressed concern that we still had an item in the works to give them, it was said that our binder was looking great, whatever that means. As such, I want to commend the finance team for their constant dedication in moving tasks like for this forward. And while we received support from across the campus, I'd also like to give kudos to our coworkers who came through for us in a crunch. IT specifically, who had to write some reports on short notice to meet a defined need. And in particular, I need to mention Angela Weaver, Director of Financial Aid. She had to respond to what seemed like endless questions and requests for documentation regarding HERF distributions. And throughout those days, she never stopped taking my calls. A Whitfield representative is scheduled to be here at the January meeting to present the audit to the board. And last but not least, Chris Paul and I participated in a short meeting with individuals from the Capital Development Board on Monday of last week. In October of 2021, thirteen months ago, Chris had to provide a listing of college deferred maintenance priority projects to ICCB. Recently, CDB reached out and asked to talk about the top project on her list involving a chiller that is at the end of its useful life and needs to be replaced. CDB is hoping to know after the first of the year whether funding will be available for this and other priority projects at a number of community colleges. With a little luck, we may be able to get this chiller replaced at twenty-five percent of the project's estimated cost of a little over three hundred and sixty-three thousand. And I am open to any questions.
You mentioned that we're getting more than four percent, or we're getting four percent on a lot of our investments now. Do you know what our average interest rate is on our debt? I mean, I don't need to know exactly, but I mean generally, what interest rate are we paying on our bonds?
I have no idea, I wouldn't, I would hesitate to even venture a guess at this point, but I can get that for you.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to know.
Sure.
Because it has not gone up, you know, because
Correct.
Those were all issued when interest rates are low, so we should be in a pretty good position there.
I would think we would, yes, we should be on the upside.
It's good that we got to refinance some of those when interest rates were so low, so.
Right, right. Any other questions?
Yeah, yes. We see a number called the market value adjustment. Could you explain that for us, please?
We are required to present our investments at market value. And so I've, I'm starting to report that quarterly instead of doing that at the end of the year. And so I made an adjustment at the end of September, hoping it would look actually a little bit better. And it looks a little bit worse. So that's just the difference between book to market.
Right, okay, well, so it's, it's the, it's the fact that we have quite a few investments at a lower interest rate, and as interest rates go up, the value of those investments goes down. And that difference is called the market value adjustment, is that correct?
It's a difference in the carrying value. I don't want to, I'm not the investment manager. I know that our carrying value is higher than our investments are currently worth.
I just don't want anybody to think that that's a real money loss.
No, it's not.
It's, it's just the reflection of the fact that interest rates have gone up and we have investments at a lower interest rate and therefore the value of that investment has gone down.
It's the same way you need to think about your own personal investments. Nothing is lost until you cash it out. So. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mary. Okay, so start off with some really exciting news. We finally heard back from Hastings and Chivetta, and so they will be here in December. And so we'll be pulling together the, what we call the main complex mover team. And then also, I know there were at least two board members who were interested in participating in those discussions. So this will be the initial discussion with our architect and engineer to really begin scoping out the project in the main complex. I've actually talked to Joel this evening. I'd like to actually engage the Student Government Association in that initial meeting. And then, of course, Hastings and Chivetta will kind of lay out their plan. They'll have a number of focus groups and we'll really try to provide opportunities for as many team members on campus and, of course, community members who may have an interest in providing some perspective on the vision of that, of that space. Of course, we'll come with, with our thoughts and ideas and then we'll sort of build around there. So that'll be happening in December, I'll keep the board informed. And if there, I think, I think, I know for sure Dwight, you participated in a walkthrough last time. So if you want to continue or if another board member as well would like to continue doing that, just let me know. But I'll keep you all informed on, on that process as well. And then just another quick one, so December twelfth, we're, we're going to have a launch event for our new brand. This is certainly a long time coming. I know that that's already been unveiled to board and team members, so this is going to be the actual launch event where we'll be able to see it all live and this is it. So we begin to roll it out with, you know, with new energy and looking forward to the future on that. So things will be coming out on that. I think the announcement's coming out the next week or so and we'll have new swag and all that good stuff. A couple other things, you heard about some of these things from, from a few of the other team members, but, you know, Tim started off this, this afternoon, this evening, around the enrollment management plan. So a message will go out tomorrow, which is really the, the sort of draft version of our enrollment management plan, which, which one of the pieces of that is to realize that, that connects to our strategic plan. So one of the pieces that we'll build in there is each one of our objectives in that plan will be linked to likely Key Direction one, two, or four. And, you know, we, you know, the trick of all these plans is to make sure the operalization of the, the, sort of, I'm trying to get that word out of my mouth, but sort of activating it and making sure it's alive and well and it doesn't sort of fall asleep at the wheel, so to speak. So we're making sure that team members are staying engaged in it and, so you'll see that. You'll have an opportunity to provide some feedback as a board member that I think Tim mentioned. Our plan is to bring that to all of you in January for voting, so. Another piece today, and this was actually part of an executive team retreat, we are going to bring forward a, I think, a pretty ambitious proposal for a CBE investment, sort of looking at an academic transformation department, a component of the academic department, which is really looking at, at sort of a leader of CBE instructional design team and then, of course, some operational budget to allow us to promote that. I've said this in a few other meetings, but I'm kind of fortunate. I've said this in a few other meetings, but I, I'm kind of fortunate enough, I'm leading a, a president committee for CBE, and we're looking at standardizing, you know, rules and guidelines and creating a model for the state. The good news is, we're sort of leading the way on that. But I think, you know, i- if we want to grow as community colleges in general, we have to be looking at what those future innovative models are doing. So, I really appreciate the board's support over the last year and a half or two of allowing us to kind of really pursue that mission and vision. So, you'll be seeing that, you know, in kind of a, a draft form in the next couple of months. And then when we start to have budget planning processes in the early spring, which leads me to the second point, which will be a budget planning retreat with the board, you know, that will be one of the proposals you'll see, and so we'll look to build that into next fiscal year's budget. You'll also be seeing, and this is one that's also kind of dragged a little bit, and we were waiting on another partner institution to see if they were going to actually want to move forward with us. We haven't really heard back from them since the last time we did hear back from them. And I'll just leave their name out of it, but this is around the, the health clinic on campus. So, today, we flushed through this as well as, as an exec team. And really, my, my goal was to try to say, hey, okay, what do we want to do here? So, we have, I think, a proposal that we hope will be satisfying to the board. It, it will create some changes in that space, but also allow us to continue at some level, providing some support for our students. I've also kept you all updated and you, you've, I think you, you were, you were shared a sort of demo video. And thank you for those that got back to me and were able to look at that and provide some feedback. You know, and this too, it, it takes time to get this off the ground. But we're really hoping to launch, you know, a dashboard sort of system on campus, which helps us stay tuned into not only our strategic planning performance, but financial, you know, performance, program performance. So, at any given moment, even at a board meeting, we can pull up how we're performing and look at those indicators and actually look at those against other like schools and really give us a sense of, of how well we're doing and also allow us to sort of embrace those vulnerabilities that we're facing. Dr. Jackson talked about the student survey, and we're actually going to launch a climate survey on campus, which is also come out, come out of KD three. And so, we're planning to launch that in December. You all have a link to that survey I sent this morning in my, in my monthly update. So, if you have any feedback or perspective on that, just let us know. We haven't done this in a long, long time, so this is an opportunity for us to, again, create some baseline data. And we would do this on an annual basis in December. And then every spring, we would actually share that feedback with the campus and really look at opportunities that we have to improve and also make those adjustments even in our strategic plan as we move forward. This is kind of tucked in the middle and not by design, but I, I'm kind of going through my list. I, I do want to recognize Kathy Willis. She's retiring on Friday. Kathy has been our Director of West for about twelve years. So, I just want to thank her for her service and all the great work that she's done for Lewis and Clark. So, thank you, Kathy, if you're listening. I don't know if she is, but we really appreciate her great work. And there is a, I think, a reception on Thursday for her, so hopefully team members can come out to that as well. A couple other things that we're, we're thinking of doing and kind of shaping to not only strengthen communication, but, but also to strengthen alignment between different groups on campus. So, starting in the spring, we're going to have a Lewis and Clark Faculty Association and Exec Team Retreat. And I've mentioned this to Debbie, if it would be something they'd be interested in. And she was like, of course, which I knew, but I wanted to ask. And so, this is an opportunity for both leadership teams to kind of come together and look at, you know, what things are we missing, where are opportunities in, in the work that we're trying to accomplish together? Another idea is, and we haven't done this since I've been here, but having a supervisor or a manager sort of retreat, kind of bringing all of our managers, managers together on campus and looking at policy, looking at practice, looking at vulnerabilities, and just giving everyone an opportunity in one space to kind of share and, and talk. And then, of course, take some actions based on what some common issues or concerns may be. You know, another big one that we, we've started to really talk about is team member evaluation process. We don't have really a formal process, but, but this is something that's not, not, oh, you know, we got you. It's, it's an opportunity to create more of a, a dialogue with those that report to us as managers. So, you know, it's not like an annual thing, oh, my gosh, it's, it's May, I've got to do my evaluation. This is trying to really build on the culture of, of having open communication and being able to provide feedback in an ongoing, fluid way so that folks have the opportunity to improve performance and strengthen their performance during the course of the year. And they don't have to wait to hear formal feedback at the end of the year. So, we're, we're really looking at, at sort of building that into sort of this framework of, of growing the culture in a positive way. And then, of course, I know, I think Kevin is going. I don't know if any other board members are going, but the end of this month is the Governance Leadership Institute through ACCT. That's going to be in Chicago. It's an opportunity for presidents and board members to come together with, with our colleagues across the state to really look at best practices and opportunities to improve the work that we do together, so. And as always, just want to thank the team for all that they're doing to continue to move Lewis and Clark forward. It's, you know, there's a lot of opportunity in front of us, and of, of course, it takes everyone to make it work. So, thank you all, and also want to welcome Jill to the board. It's going to be good to work with you, so welcome, yes. Thank you all. I was looking for the word operationalize, so it just wasn't coming out of my mouth.
I didn't miss it, I didn't miss that. It was fine without it, okay. There being no further business?
Hope we don't get that square.
Meeting is adjourned.